Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, we are going to observe a moment of silence this morning. First, in solidarity with the French people and at a respect for the innocent lives lost so tragically last Friday by barbaric terrorists. In addition, we want to pay our respects to the service in memory of Peter Gasparino, who served as a member of the Greenwich Board of Estimative Taxation for close to 25 years and was an integral part of the community, serving as a educator at the St. Mary's High School here in town. So at this time, please let us observe a moment of silence in memory of all those that left us last week. So, welcome. This is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call on any interested attendee on matters that are specifically stated on the agenda today. Those items are -- the agendas are at the door as you come into the meeting room, as long as two sets of the materials that the Board will be acting on today. We do have two presentations today, which we're looking forward to hearing from the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, as well as from liberation programs, which will take place under the new business portion of the meeting. We do have also one item in executive session concerning pending litigation. The next meeting of the Board, for those who may not be here when we say this at the end, is on Thursday, December 3. Item number two, approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on Thursday, November 5. Are there any changes or correction to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So, second.
You know, there was one thing I was going to mention that --
Mine.
The first -- under 3B, where it talks about Ms. Sullivan, I would just say she's Mrs., but also, we should note that she's been with the town for 26 years. I think it's worthy of putting the number of years of her service in the minutes, as was noted. Okay? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay, without objection. Okay, updates, just to proceed quickly. We had, of course, Veteran Day services throughout the town, starting with many of our schools, elementary schools. We had the Greenwich Covenant of Cares Community Walk, which this year highlighted and paid respect to our Vietnam veterans, so well deserved. We had the American Legion Post 29 Ceremony, 11:11, at 11:00. And we had the Byram Vets Parade and Ceremony. So, thanks to all those who were an integral part of continuing to pay our respects to the folks who assured our freedom and to honor those living vets here in our community. We had on November 12, the swearing-in of Fire Lieutenant Eric Mazyars. He succeeded into the position with the retirement of Billy Ingram. Billy Ingram served the town as a career firefighter for 38 years and certainly want to acknowledge Bill's contributions to our town and wish him well in his future endeavors. On November 15, we had a program at the Greenwich Library, sponsored through our Economic Advisory Committee, along with the Yankee Institute. And we were fortunate to get former Selectman Ned Lamont, local businessman, and State Senator Scott France to carry forth a very robust discussion about some of the challenges facing the state. It was attended by 300 people and moderated by Larry Kudlow. And it was a difficult event in that we were competing against the Patriots and the Giants, and we still were able to get 300 folks. I want to thank everybody on the volunteer side who made that possible. This morning, just before this meeting, we work with the Allianz Français to host a French flag-raising and, again, observance of the morning in solidarity with the French people at this difficult time in their nation's history. Some of the past meetings, there have been a number of meetings taking place, all centered upon budget. As you know, we are in the process of working with town departments to formulate their operating and capital budgets. Considerable effort is in time spent by Mr. Branyan, along with Ms. Jones of the Selectmen's Office, in addition with finance, to synthesize these budgets, refine them, and make them ready for the BET to begin to deliberate over. We are seeing a continuing interaction with our nonprofit communities as they are facing significant challenges in funding. We know that the United Way of Greenwich is going through a transition in terms of having to readjust allocations to a number of these member agencies, and, in lieu of that, those agencies are then coming and looking for guidance and support. I must commend the folks at the United Way, Karen Keegan and her team, volunteers, once again, really getting their arms around what is a most challenging time in the history of that organization. Yesterday, I traveled up to Danbury for the Western Connecticut Council of Government meeting, and you're going to hear from two of the finance from WestCOG later, but they gave a presentation yesterday, and gentlemen, you might be able to help me out in articulating the precise system, but it had to do with traffic incident safety and technologies developed through the Department of Transportation. Is that right? And it was a visualization, so they can put up on the screen and look at all the various speeds and topographies and actually road surface conditions and be able to formulate policy issues, like in terms of allocating capital dollars to fix specific things. Similarly, with traffic regulations, it would help drive and aid in the decision-making. So that was another presentation. I'd love to have you come and do that one, too, because I think particularly we have one of our esteemed Finance Board members, Mr. Raymer, here, and when they look at allocating dollars for road resurfacing and things, we have some of the technology in terms of pavement management, but these other attributes that you bring would, I think, enhance the overall request. So we'll look forward to maybe having you come back and do that one. Just in closing, future events this afternoon, I don't know if we'll be making it, but the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center will be the location for the annual Senior Center Thanksgiving Celebration. We're typically invited to be guest servers, but I think we may be a little late on that today.
As long as you save some turkey.
Mr. Raymer will go in our stead and serve, along with Mr. Baccino, and the rest of the folks here could go and -- they give you an apron and you just have to serve. November 29, in this room, we'll be having a swearing-in ceremony at 4:00 PM, and certainly the public's invited to attend. That concludes my updates. I've asked Mr. Marzullo just to give a brief update on his assignment, which is to be the ex officio member to the New Lev Building Committee. I did not report in my meetings, but I did have a meeting with all the requisite parties, which included Ms. O'Neill, Ms. Fox, Ms. DeLuca, Mrs. DeLuca, Mr. Walco, Town Legal, in terms of how the project moves forward. And so, for those who are interested in that, I know there's been a lot of coordination taking place here to assure that we move this project forward in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chairman said there will be no action from this Board today. I did meet or talked to Mrs. DeLuca yesterday. Planning and zoning on the 29th of this month will be meeting -- oh, the 24th of this month, Nick, right, 24th? Yeah. Will be meeting, and I -- it is her prediction that the Board of Ed, because there's a current -- the current MI that was referred to them will ask them for an extension on the current MI as-is through them. She anticipates, based on my updates and what she has read, that if the plan that the Building Committee submits to the Board of Education is, in fact, Plan 1, based on the vote, that will require a new vote by the Board of Education, sends it to us for a new referral to planning and zoning within that 90-day or so extension. So once again, I'm going to be giving my colleagues some updates. I'm going to reserve comment, opinion, right now. I expect, I'm going to ask through the Chairman, that on December 3, we will ask the architects to formally brief us, or my other two colleagues, their -- what they really did, what they did to, what they've been doing to the Building Committee, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll be putting that on the agenda through the Chairman on December 3. So basically, the update is brief. Plan, okay, Plan 1, Plan 2, and Plan D. Plan D is what the, what is before, planning and zoning, in regards to the school, knocking that down on the footprint. But with that said, I want to, once again, reemphasize to my two colleagues that even Plan D involves approximately, once again, it's an approximate, 2/3 of the ravine anyway. That's important to know. So even Plan D, the one we voted on, is not clear of the ravine or clear of the wooded area, and I think that's important to know. Plan D, as-is, did not receive any support from the Building Committee, but I will underscore that does not mean it did not receive support from members of the community, and we have many, many emails to the contrary of that, but I just want to make sure. They received pretty much zero support from the Building Committee itself, and including the Architect as well. The initial vote on, was 5, 2, 1. That was when Plan 1 and 2 and D were all incorporated in that vote, 5 in favor, 2 not in favor, but I'll get into that, and then 1 abstention. When we removed Plan D out of the equation and just, there was a vote on Plan 1 and 2, the vote was 7, 0, 1. Mr. Drake is here. It was the one, one who abstained. Quickly, the, so we'll concentrate on Plan 1, that received the most support, unanimous support at that time. Once again, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimous vote that included 2/3 of the ravine. Plan 1 has about, once again, these are approximates, and we'll be verifying that through the formal presentation. Plan 1 that was voted on includes about 30% or 1/3 more of what the Board of Selectmen voted on. Plan 2 is in compliance with the 2/3 part that we voted on, approximately. Plan 1 is closer to 95. Once again, we might have opinions on that, but that's a fact. It allows the kids to stay in the school during construction. Once again, we'll all have opinions on that, but that's a fact. And there is a bridge connecting the parking lot to the school. That's a fact. As I said, Plan 2 fits in with the totality of the MI voted on by this, by the Board of Selectmen. There's a younger and older kid separation that's -- so in terms of the facts, those are the facts. Now, once again, there are concerns that this Board of Selectmen has made public, that we, you know, we were clear in terms of limiting the ravine, you know, the issue of kids being in close proximity to a construction site, the air, safety, noise, construction site. However, that will all be addressed by the individual Selectmen. Our concerns, can some of those concerns be eliminated, based on our recommendation as well? Could be. But that is probably going to be vetted by us after the December 3 meeting. And I'll ask the Chairman, too, in terms of the process. We're going forward, well, it's my intention to ask Chairman Tessie to put the Architect on the December 3 meeting, but be advised, the Board of, the Board of Education still has to present something to us. We're going to be meeting with the Architect because it's responsible to us, because from our point of view, we want to speed the process up. That's not to mean, though, the Board of Select, the Board of Education will have something to us by then. So we're going to be asking questions of the Architect, not knowing until there's a formal vote. You can, you can have an idea what the Board of Education probably will be doing, but until a vote is formally done by them with a referral to us, it's going to be asking questions probably about all the plans, D 1 and 2. The question for the Chairman, I think, too, is whether or not, after the December 3 vote, if that is, if that is sufficient, or would we want to require another meeting on that? But that's up to Chairman Tessie. And that's really it, in terms of the facts of the meetings.
Thank you for the update. Again, I think when talking with all the parties on Wednesday, the whole idea was to respect the process in place, allow the Planning and Zoning Commission has the existing MI before, they have to adjudicate it. That's just, they have to either vote it down, have the Board of Ed withdraw it, perhaps wait in, allow the Board of Ed to accelerate the approval of a new MI and bring that before. There seems to be some ability with the Building Committee and speaking to Mr. Walco to look at, you know, recalibrating the design, as was noted in the discussion. What they have voted on are conceptual, and they will get more refinement when they come forward with their A2 survey and preliminary site design for P&amp;Z, because they usually go together. So the MI in the preliminary site plan come to the P&amp;Z as one. So I will say, I mean, December 3, it's fine to have them come, but I think we may be jumping ahead of the process and perhaps creating more confusion than --
Oh, it's fine.
Not, I mean, so --
The opportunity is there, if that's where you are.
Yeah. I appreciate, though, you've done a nice job of representing the Board, and I thank you. I think everyone, this is somewhat new territory, because we've done, this project was done differently than those in the past. And I think the lesson learned, at least for me speaking, is I will never, if I'm in any position, vote to act on an MI without a survey and have the formal thing come forward. It just didn't, the intentions were good, but I think the results were chaotic, so.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of, at your discretion, the Architects, I say December 3 because that's our next meeting, they're available to come whenever they want.
Right. We talked about this, and essentially, anybody can ask at any time through the, through the Building Committee to be briefed on it. I don't think that anyone's adverse to that. I think they actually welcome that. So I don't want to supersede what they're doing, but I think everybody's moving forward with the best intent. So thank you for the update.
[inaudible]
Do you have a question, Claire?
Tricia Kantorski asked me to do something in the absence, relevant to the topic.
I mean, in all candor, it's not, it's really meant as a briefing. If you want to send it to us and distribute it, it just, we don't want to, we've got a prescribed agenda. But thank you, thank you. You know, and I have to say, kudos to the Building Committee. I know you've done --
Yes, they have.
-- tremendous work over the last months, and we're very grateful for that, again, as volunteers. Thank you.
And the non-Building Committee, who keeps showing, I mean, who keep coming.
Citizen engagement, yes.
Exactly. Peter.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Don't, I wasn't going to forget about you, but, so, we've seen some changes in staffing. You know that we're looking for a new Town Purchasing Director and Administrative Services head. I believe that's out on the market. It's been posted, is that right, Ben? Or it's going to be. We were also very sad to learn that the Assistant Town Planner, Rob Searle, is leaving to take a position as Town Planner in the City of Meriden. And Rob's a great, a great guy. From the moment he set foot in Town Hall, he was a breath of fresh air. He was a zoning inspector. So a loss for Greenwich, a gain for Meriden. And was it on Friday, Michael Rosen announced to me that he is going to be leaving us to take a position as the Assistant Town Manager in the Town of Bedford, Massachusetts. So we wish Michael well. He's done a great job for me and for the Board and the community, and his trajectory through his education as having a Master's in Public Administration from the State University of New York's Rockefeller School of Government, top of the class, graduating class, was to be a Town Manager. And so selfishly, I'm disappointed he's leaving, but very happy for him, because now he's pursuing his trajectory in what he went to school for. So, sure, sure.
So I've actually sat up here on the dais for about three and a half years, and I think this is the first time I've ever used my microphone. It has, it has been such an honor and pleasure to serve the residents of Greenwich, through good times and through bad. I could not ask for a better mentor than our first Selectman, and I thank the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, and all of our dedicated town staff for their guidance as well. This opportunity as Executive Assistant has been an amazing frontline view of local government and of an active and engaged citizenry. The experience here has been invaluable and has shaped me into an up-and-coming public manager. As Peter said, I'm actually stepping into the role of Assistant Town Manager of Bedford, Massachusetts, and I couldn't have done that without my time here first. I'm going to miss all the friends I've made here at Town Hall and in the community, but please know that I am fortunate to have met you all, learned from you all, laughed with you, and, most importantly, worked together to make this the best community around. So thank you, Greenwich, and keep in touch.
Thank you, Mike. And again, we'll be going through the process of filling these positions over the next several, several months. Under Old Business, we have with us the Department of Public Works Engineering Division, our Assistant, excuse me, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, Jim Michael, in what we're really taking up today is a matter that was before us last meeting, which is an effort on the part of the town, working with the school communities and working with police to establish uniform speed limits in the various zones in and around our schools. If there's anything that we, we hear often is about the speed of traffic, the concerns on the part of citizens about vehicular speed, and so I commend the Department for bringing forward this proposal.
Okay. So, not much new since last time, but just a couple of quick things. We did hear back from a couple of the private schools on request to slightly, what I'm going to call tweak, the hours, based on their operations. So we made a couple very minor changes, 15 minutes here or there, based on their requests. So nothing substantial there. Another piece that we changed was, we heard back from the State Office of Traffic Administration. We received approvals on a couple other of the public school speed limits since our last meeting, Glenville School, Western Middle School. And they, one of their comments on looking at some of the other public schools, because they're in the process of reviewing those, is they will not allow a 15 mile per hour speed zone anywhere. 20 will be the minimum. So we had a couple 15s called out. Basically, they feel that it's not something that people will drive, and it becomes an, such an enforcement issue, it's almost impossible to do. So a couple of the ones that we maybe had 15 on before are now listed as 20 on the actual approval list. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was Eagle Hill School contacted us, and one other person contacted us about Eagle Hill School, which is a private school, concerned that they were not included in the first, in this round of approvals. The reason they were not was back in March, May timeframe, they were included then with all the public schools because they were going through a planning and zoning change to their property, and one of their conditions was to obtain a school zone speed limit for Eagle Hill School. So they, that, they were included in the first application. It wasn't us trying to give them oversight, but they have actually, were submitted to the state, and we did get approval of Eagle Hill School's speed zone between the last meeting and this meeting. So just wanted to clarify that, so that Eagle Hill didn't feel left out, that we didn't include them in this one. It was strictly for ones that we hadn't already requested. So, other than that, that's pretty much it.
I just want to thank you, because I was approached by a parent of students at Eagle Hill at an event, and they asked me, they were following this closely, and I, and I'm glad that that was done, so I can, so thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
So, does anyone have any comment? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the request from the Department of Public Works for the establishment of school zone speed limits, as is amended today, because what was before us included the 15 mile per hour for Patterson Deer Park. It's the second, from the bottom on the second page. So that's in the time adjustments as --
Right.
So is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Without objection.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much. Do you want our signature now?
Signature.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So with us today, as I alluded to earlier, are two gentlemen from the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. We have with us Rob Saichin, is that right?
Saichin.
Saichin? Saichin?
Yes.
And I'll give you a little overview about Rob. He is a senior planner. He's a key advisor to the region and its municipalities. Beginning in January of next year, he will assume responsibility of the Metropolitan Planning Organization and TTAG. Tell me what TTAG is again.
Technical Transportation Advisory Group.
Technical Transportation Advisory Group. And I believe, Jim, you serve for Greenwich on TTAG. So Rob will assume responsibility for the administration of that in the Southwest Region, which are the towns that, are eight towns that were part of SWRPA. Through Rob's efforts, he will help the region become eligible and look at billions of dollars in federal and state funding. His experience is in transportation and environmental planning, hazard mitigation and resilience in GIS. Notable hazard resilience achievements, he was project manager for past hazard mitigation plans, HMPs, organized municipal hazard mitigation workshops, including for Greenwich in December 2014. He championed efforts to assess the risk of critical area infrastructure to flooding, including sea level rise. He helped spearhead efforts to deliver salt marsh advancement zone assessments in collaboration with the Nature Conservancy. Also joining us is Mike Toll. Mike is an Associate Planner at WestCOG. He serves as the point of contact for the environmental and hazard mitigation efforts. He's been a key contributor to new regional hazard mitigation planning, which keeps the region eligible for many types of FEMA funding. Again, his experience is in environmental and hazard mitigation planning, conservation, GIS, and computer modeling. His hazard resilience achievements include storm damage assessment modeling for the region, currently seeking regional community rating system funding for the region, project manager for hazard mitigation plan, and helped organize the hazard mitigation workshop, which included the Greenwich 2000, December 2014 effort. His professional interests are climate change and environmental science, GIS, data science, and data visualization. So, welcome. I apologize, I was just advised, that's why I got glasses, but I haven't used them. I jumped over the Parking Services. Rita, are you on a severe time limit?
Yeah.
Okay. So, gentlemen, I gave you the intro, it's kind of like --
Thanks for coming.
The preview.
See you, see you December 3.
I apologize, I said, I'm trying to adjust to reading. So, so this is what you're going to see after we get through with dealing with parking. So if you won't mind, you got, I gave you guys the introduction. Rita, welcome. I apologize, I skipped sequence.
It's okay, you know, I'll be as quick as possible.
So everyone knows Rita as Reliant and her capable team in Parking Services, and you're here today. Tell us what you want us to consider and potentially do for you. you're here today, tell us what you want us to consider and potentially do for you.
There are two things I want you guys to consider. As you know, I've been going through the code and kind of cleaning up to see what we can do in terms of parking regulations, making sure that whatever we have on the street match what's in the actual charter and code. And one of the things that we saw is that it could be better simplified by consolidating, extracting current fees in the code. So, anytime we need to make a change, we'd have to go back in and change the code, and I felt that maybe it's an opportunity to kind of improve it and take all of the fees that are listed in the code and put it into a fees and charges schedule, similar to what Parks and Rec does. The process wouldn't change, we would still go before the Board of Selectmen to ask for any changes to those fees, we just wouldn't incorporate it into the town code. It would list the locations of the parking lots and not the fees, and that would be listed separately. So, that's one part I'm asking the board to consider, is extract the fees out of the code and put it into a spreadsheet, which you have attached. And the second part of the request is to consider a small increase, around a 2% increase for the permits. And the reason for that is, one, there was a proposal by the previous director of a 10% increase, and I decided not to go through with that because we needed to start making changes to see what is necessary, and at this point, we need the extra 2% to basically maintain the property, the parking lots, and make improvements, and it's very minimal. And as you can see from the attachment, that we're actually one of the lowest in the state of Connecticut.
Rita, a couple of questions.
Yep.
Just on terms of the change from the code to administrative, has that been reviewed with law?
Not yet, no.
In terms of making that adjustment, my only hesitation is, since it is involving the municipal code, that it certainly be run through them as terms of process.
Okay.
Rather than act today and find out that there was another mechanism, that we had to post a notice and hold a hearing and so forth, I just want to...
Okay.
I have no, conceptually, I have no problem with it, but legally, I just think we need to double-check to be sure. And then, just one question on the fee schedule. You mentioned SoundView somewhere in here.
Yes, it's in the fee schedule. So, the...
Because it looks like a decrease.
It is. The interesting thing with SoundView is, I am still trying to find out the rationale for the high cost, because SoundView is the only other open lot that is the same price as the Plaza, which is a covered lot. So, it's very high, and as a result, we are not selling permits for that lot. And I think in an effort to really maximize the use of that lot, if we lower it to something that is somewhat reasonable for the merchants and employees, it's something that they would be able to purchase, and we would start selling. So, we're just not selling the permits at 644. It's very high.
At six, oh, at the price of 644?
Yeah, 644. It's the only open lot that's the same price as the covered garage of the Plaza.
So, based upon inventory, I mean, can you tell us what's available versus what's expended? Because isn't that the lot that is often referred to as quote-unquote "the Lexus Lot"?
Yes, the Lexus Lot. We, on a daily basis, we have maybe five, two, about 10 empty parking spaces, and usually you want to keep that to about three, but a full lot, we only sell 50 permits, and to have five empty spaces, that's a large percentage. You really want to have an oversell, and then maybe have a couple on the waiting list. We don't even have an oversell of that parking lot or a waiting list.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
My only, I know it's only 2%, correct? Any objection to waiting till next time to hear from people? Because 1% or 2%, we are going to hear from people. Before we act, to give them a chance to say why they might or might not object to a 2%. I mean...
Is there any time...
Is there a time, are we under a...
The next meeting is December 3rd. So, saying we usually like to...
You can vote, you can hold off until the next meeting, and at that point, I'll have Legal's response, and if you want, I'll wait until the following meeting, the second meeting in December. That way, Legal will have a little bit of time to research it, as well as the increase.
Correct.
If that's okay.
So, just in terms of timing...
Last priority. So, I zoomed in for Greenwich to give you an idea of where these, using these characteristics, where we have our most vulnerable locations. Now, this index can be modified. This is something that we took on, we chose these characteristics, but if you felt like that disability was a bigger concern, you could wait that more, you could take some in, you could take some out. It's a way for you to do planning and identify your vulnerable people. So, moving on to the environmental profile, we want to take a look at what resources we currently have within the region, and also consider what environmental risks we have when we're doing our planning. So, initially, one of our primary resources in the case of flooding is open space. Open space serves as a buffer to flood zones and flooding events. So, when you look at our FEMA flood zones, we're, and as a region, we have 25% of our FEMA flood zones are already covered by open space. So, this is already a good start for flood mitigation and hazard resilience mitigation, and to leverage those open space properties is a pretty good method. So, this also has an opportunity in other federal programs, where if you have a lot of open space that covers flood zones, there's potentials for flood savings and flood insurance savings, there's programs that provide those kinds of things, and we're looking into that. Drilling down into Greenwich, we show that we have 2,667 acres of open space. It's about 6.2% of the total area in Greenwich. You can see a lot of it's in the northern part of Greenwich. We're also taking a look at sea level rise inundation, we're taking a look at these climate change factors and consider them in the planning scene. Certainly, when you have floods, there, it can be difficult on the transportation systems, but if you also incorporate and consider how sea level rise is going to be rising and changing our landscape, it becomes more dire. I also included the location of the wastewater treatment plant, which by its very essence has to be located close to the coast, but it's going to be facing more challenges due to sea level rise. And in the region, let's see here, sorry. All right. So, in the region, we have about 81 miles of road that are impacted by sea level rise. Moving on to our next topic about environmental profiles, what we're able to do with some of our data, we're taking a look at how weather events might change the region. So, it might be that we're going to get more extreme precipitation events, and with our data sets and our data crunching, we're modeling now an extreme event, extreme precipitation event vulnerability studies. So, we're trying to figure out where are locations vulnerable to extreme precipitation events, not just flooding, flash flood events, for example. And using our data sets, we're able to do for the South, we're looking at characteristics such as impervious surfaces, and drainage, and flood zones, and soils, and we can kind of find out where these vulnerable locations are. All right, thanks. And Rob's going to take us into the vision.
Thank you, Mike. And this is all really good stuff. We have a very robust GIS program and do a lot of GIS work in partnership with the town of Greenwich. What we're looking to do here with a lot of this data collection is to just better provide and inform those that are in the position of making decisions, as well as the public, because it's important that we think these things out, and that's what this data is for. With respect to the region, you'll see here, we have added the areas that have the largest increases in daytime population. Those are depicted in orange. The blue colors, these are the economic hotspots, these are the big areas or employment centers. So, that's there. When we add in our major thoroughfares, the Merritt Parkway's, the I-95s, the Route Ones, the I-84s, you see, you begin to see a correlation between the employment centers, the increases in daytime population, and the transportation network, which leads us to the vision, and that is the creation of resilience corridors. And what we mean by that is to target and implement mitigation strategies and construction measures that are in alignment with these corridors, so that we, again, can ensure access to jobs, evacuations if need be, things of that nature. A couple work products that we have that are ongoing or recently completed, again, we're working on the hazard mitigation plans that includes the town of Greenwich, that keeps us eligible for FEMA funding, very important stuff, like Mike mentioned, the enhanced precipitation event model. That's an ongoing thing that we can always tweak and adjust. We've done emergency evacuation planning and needs assessment for DEMIS, that is the state homeland security entity. And lastly, we are working very closely with UConn, because as we all know, we're only as good as the data that we have, and data is always changing. UConn has a very good team of environmental engineers, and they're using some of our data to run enhanced flood modeling for our region. Proposed work programs, like Mike mentioned, with some of that open space that is in FEMA flood zones, it's called a community rating system. Municipalities can participate in this program, and it can reduce flood insurance premiums, potentially. There's also an open space inventory and some other GIS efforts that we're working on. So, with that said, that concludes the presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Great. Well, thank you, both gentlemen, and I think this has been informative and is being carried through public access, so it gives opportunity for our residents to see the work that the Regional Council does, as well as those in attendance. And certainly, I'm happy to entertain any questions those on the board have or in the Well, it sounds like you wowed everybody to the point where they have no questions, but again, I just want to emphasize the resource that's available to us, not just as the Selectmen, but as the town and all the policymaking and ministerial bodies of the town. I know that you work very closely with our land use agencies, with our Department of Public Works, and now expanding on to really be a resource to even some of our non-government organizations who are looking at data to help them and fulfill their mission. So, thank you very much, and perhaps we can have you come back and do the one on the traffic.
That sounds good. It's our pleasure. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation, and really, an opportunity for us to further understand the value that Liberation Programs, Inc. provides to the region, and specifically, the town of Greenwich. We have with us, from Liberation Programs, the President and Chief Executive Officer, Alan J. Mathis. Alan is the President and Chief Executive Officer of Liberation Programs, which is a nonprofit behavioral healthcare agency serving Lower Fairfield County since 1972. Alan has 28 years of experience in nonprofit and government executive management, working on social service issues confronting low-income families. Prior to joining LPI in 2006, Alan served as President and Chief Executive Officer of the Lower East Side Service Center, providing support, housing, mental health services, and addiction treatment, primary healthcare, employment services, and social ventures in New York City and Brooklyn. He served as Director of the Human Resource Administration Center, the nation's largest social service department, serving 3 million city residents annually. Alan earned a Master's of Science in Management degree from the State University of New York at Stony Brook. As an Alfred P. Sloan Fellow, he's studied public policy at the Kennedy School of Government, Harvard University, and the Humphrey Institute of Public Affairs at the University of Minnesota. He resides in the city of Norwalk with his wife, Melissa. And so, he is here with us, and this is out of the result of a conversation that we've had over the last month, but even before that, Alan's been continually wanting to provide outreach to tell us that, not only what they do, but that we have to recognize, we have a very serious problem in our midst. And the problem that's in our midst has to do with the addiction to substances, notably prescription drugs, heroin, and the like. This is so much a problem that the Western Connecticut Council of Governments has actually established a task force to specifically look at this issue and come together all the stakeholders, whether it be within education, human service, law enforcement, and the like, to develop better strategies on addressing it. In my opinion, and solely that, but clearly, what I took away from this is that all too often, people don't want to acknowledge and share that their family member has been, is an addict, and perhaps, they don't want to recognize too, when there's a horrible tragedy, acknowledging that the death was actually attributable to that. And so, in our conversation, several weeks ago, we discussed this point, and I said, you know what? No one should be ashamed of that. They should actually look at it as providing comfort and resource, because we are in it together, and it knows no economic boundary. In fact, there's probably a greater proliferation and more wealthier communities to some of these issues. So, that is why they're here, because they have a tremendous story to tell, and also to share what they can do as their specialty to help combat this insidious situation. So, welcome.
I have to adjust it upwards a little. I always ate my Wheaties, and I finished my bowl. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, and Selectmen Ozulo, and Selectmen Tonner, and Michael Rosen, and Mr. Brown, and very happy to be here.
Thank you.
Although I live in Norwalk, my wife, Melissa, was born in Greenwich, and my in-laws were born and raised in Greenwich, and grandmother Jessie Chapman and Malcolm Chapman lived in Greenwich for seven-plus decades. So, I feel very much being at home with you all here today. And I really appreciated the conversation, the quality of the conversation that I had with the Chairman a couple of weeks ago. And at that conversation, I had two folks with me. One gentleman, his name was Christie Sattler, who's a resident of Greenwich and a businessman, and Dennis Munson, who is a resident of Greenwich. Both of them are on the Executive Committee at Liberation Programs, and they shared their stories with the Chairman as to why both of them are involved with Liberation Programs. And let me just say that they were very personal. And I think that, at the end of the day, Liberation Programs is here to be a value add in all the communities that we serve. We're no stranger to Greenwich in that we had a former Chair of the Selectmen, Ann Isaacson, on our board many years ago, and Alice Millie, and Emil Jakes, and Barbara Nolan. And so, I'm only picking up on the story and on a concern that they had 30 and 40 years ago for the health and vitality of our families in our community. At the end of the day, we had presenters talk about flood resiliency. I want to talk about family and youth resiliency. So, you know, it's a little bit hard to tell people that my core competency as a professional is in narcotic addiction, because it, people want to walk the other way. But I've spent most of my career trying to figure out how our young people can avoid going down that path, and if they regretfully go down that path, what we can do to help them. Let me just introduce Maggie Young. Maggie is stationed here in Greenwich. We have two offices in Greenwich, one at the YMCA and one at Greenwich High School. And Maggie is our Director of Youth and Family Services. And I'm also joined by our Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Ostrow. And Carrie is a licensed marriage and family therapist with over 20-plus years actually in treating addiction and working with young people and their families. On a typical week, Liberation Programs will work... On a typical week, Liberation Programs will work with about 1,000 individuals, helping them get past their drug problems. But we are in 19 different schools, from Bridgeport to Greenwich, helping young people understand that there are different choices that they could fit in. We try to teach them how to have a different level of conversation that will keep them from coming into our doors to begin with. Let me just say that I worked my first 21 years in New York City, and when I decided to come to Fairfield County, I thought I would have a break from all the difficulties that I experienced in Brooklyn and Manhattan. I have to tell you that I have been alarmed for 10 years, and in some ways, I'm more frightened by what's happening in our communities, from Bridgeport to Redding to Westport, and right here in Greenwich. There is this false belief that we can figure out what child or what family is at risk. Let me tell you that the science is clear. There is no single predictor about what kid or what family is at risk. If someone tells you that, I'd like for them to send me that research paper. In the last five years alone in the state of Connecticut, 159 of 169 of our towns have had at least one episode of an overdose death due to an opiate. We've increased the number of opiate-related overdose deaths in the state of Connecticut from 174 in 2012 to 307 in 2014. According to the research that we conducted, there were 44 overdose calls placed in 2014 to the Greenwich Police Department. That the drug overdose death rate in the state of Connecticut is 8.3% for 100,000 individuals. That means that there will be five kids in a typical year in a town like Greenwich who will die to an overdose due to either heroin or prescription pain medications that were not prescribed for them. I think if five kids dying in a community like Greenwich is okay with us, then I think the status quo should be maintained. I don't believe that that's good enough for this particular community, and quite frankly, any community in our state. The current problems that we're experiencing in Connecticut and all across this country happen to be focused on opioid addiction, but make no mistake about it, we continue to have problems with many other substances of abuse. All too often, young people believe that the overconsumption of alcohol is just what you're supposed to do when you're a young person. I'm frightened when I hear of stories of young people in this community having to have their stomachs evacuated because of alcohol consumption. 10% of all the kids age 12 to 17 in our state think it's perfectly acceptable to drink five or more drinks of alcohol in a sitting twice a week. By any measure, that person would be considered as having at least a substance abuse problem. If you look at the number of young people in our community who have tried an illicit substance during a single month, you would find as many as 20%. I think these numbers are quite alarming. Now, we have tried a number of strategies in the last 20 or 30 years. We tried the "just say no" strategy. Nobody said no. We tried the mandatory drug sentencing. We declared that our schools were going to be drug-free zones, except for many kids, and at Greenwich High School, go to school to meet the person who's going to sell them a substance that they'll later take at a party. We said that law enforcement should come in, and we should interdict all the drugs, and we just stop the flow, except for it's finding its way into our medicine cabinets. In a typical year, physicians will write 240 million prescriptions for narcotic medications. That's one prescription for every adult in the United States. We are consumers of 80% of the world's prescription pain medications, although we only make up about 4% of the world's population. Clearly, all of these strategies that we've talked about have not stopped our appetite for taking mood-altering substances. So, the question is, what might help? I can tell you, as a student of public policy and a person who's provided care for almost three decades, there are three things that we should think about. One would be treatment on demand, and the second would be prevention and education on a consistent basis through the life cycle of our young people. And the third thing, and probably the most important thing, is a sustained, open, honest, and nonjudgmental conversation. That costs us $0. In fact, when I talked with the Chairman, I said, "Look, I understand that when a nonprofit guy like myself come in, I have my hand out, my peers, they'll ask for money." I don't want any money. My request comes with $0 attached. I simply don't want to see our families struggle, and they are struggling, and they are struggling in silence. If your kid had cancer, the community would band together and raise money and make sure that that young person would have the finest cancer care that could be had anywhere in this region. The stark reality is that only 1 in 10 persons in the US who need treatment for an addiction ever gets it. Sadly, there are some kids in our community, in this community, that tell our counselors that if they needed help with their homework, if they needed help learning how to score a touchdown, that that help would be readily available to them. But if you want to talk about an issue of addiction, and a curiosity about picking something up, or what happened at a party, and you wanted to have that conversation with an adult, maybe not so much. Well, I don't think that's good enough for you, and it's not good enough for me. After 30 years, or nearly 30 years, of doing this work, I'm here to offer our services. If it were not for the town of Greenwich, Liberation Programs would not have been founded, and I think we ought to pay it back by being a part of this community's ability to lead our nation in a different kind of conversation. It's not one conversation, it's many. There has to be a conversation for the kids, a conversation for the parents, a conversation for role models. And after each of those sectors have had their conversations, then perhaps we're ready to have a conversation where all three parties can sit down to the same table. Now, at the end of the day, there is something that I need. I need to have the commitment of three public servants to say that this is not good enough, and that you will accept a free offer, a free offer, to help our families build a resilience, to help our kids build a resilience. We have the resources, we have the expertise, we have the passion, and we have the energy. So with that, I'm just going to say thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today, and be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to say thank you for your very well-stated perspective on the challenge that we face. I admire your commitment to the mission and your expertise. Certainly, we stand ready to do what we can to support Liberation's efforts and those that you work with. With your guidance and your expertise, we're happy to marshal our energies toward resolving or working to resolve the issue. I'm curious to have expressed publicly, one of the questions that I asked was, how young are the individuals that are being seen by Liberation or that you're seeing? What is the entry point into this world of addiction, and perhaps, how are we identifying it? How are we able to sort of stop it before it blossoms?
Well, let me say that if you talk to adult addicts, 20, 30 years old, they'll tell you that they started their alcohol or drug consumption at age 11, 12, and 13. Oftentimes, that's not picked up or well-managed until later on in life. There are some times when a young person suffers some kind of a traumatic situation. It may be latent, and they'll develop a problem as they head to age 16, 17, 18, 19. So, whatever is motivating what will eventually become very destructive behaviors may not be picked up in that instance. Did I answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, and perhaps Maggie, I wanted to ask, you're seeing, you're on the front From your perspective, like, what are you seeing when you're at the high school?
I would just, thank you, thank you for that question. As early as ninth grade, there is specifically one student who I saw at the school who had shared with me that he had actually been using prescription drugs from his parents' cabinet from when he was in elementary school. And so, he had just entered ninth grade when we had the conversation, but had never had a conversation, neither had he had ever been offered any type of services. And so, this was in a common conversation that we were just having over lunch in the cafeteria.
I mean, it comes down to many, it starts at home. I mean, it's, you know, in terms of some of the other issues that we deal with, and specifically with the school-age population, again, my personal opinion is that there's such an expectation on the part of parents that we expect the schools to do everything, and there is a limit to what they can do. It really requires ownership over the situation and the fact that these minors are responsibility as parents. And in terms of educating parents, clearly, I know there's many programs that go forth and work with a broad spectrum of the population. And one of the most meaningful that I had exposure to was, and it's changed names now, but it came out as the Parent Leadership Training Institute, PLTI, and it was to really help engage those in the community who were of immigrant origin or ESL population, and help them become trained and empowered to facilitate community action and responsibility. And again, I know it's not just at that level, it runs the whole gamut, but again, I think it comes back to penetrating into the home, and specifically, opening the eyes to every parent of a school-age child, what the risk is.
May I say, I couldn't agree with you more. I don't think that it's solely a school issue or solely a law enforcement issue. I do think that parents need to be able to be right there and be helpful, and to lead the charge. To the extent that we create safety for parents to learn the things that they don't know, that's like a good thing. So, in other words, when the leadership of a community come forward and say, "There's no shame in saying that a family member has addiction, there's no shame in getting help, there's no shame in saying you don't know how to have the conversation," when the leadership of a community, when the thought leaders are able to do that much on a consistent basis, that opens up the door for other people to feel that they don't have to have perfect lives. So, I do, I certainly agree with you that we should not be looking to tag another thing on someone else and make them the focus to solve all of our ills, because that's not helpful and it's not practical. But I think to the extent that we can open up the conversation that tells the administrators in a school and the teachers in a school that you're not going to be blamed for saying there is a problem, and that there's, that we're not going to focus on blame, but what we're going to do is focus on solutions, not Al Mathis's solutions, but solutions that fit the unique character of Greenwich, and we start having those dynamic conversations, people will feel good that they participated. And I think that that's the kind of thing that has not happened very often, like in any community anywhere in America. In fact, I was stunned that you invited me here to speak. That is not the reception that most communities have. So, you're to be applauded.
Well, thank you, because I think the realities are what they are, and we don't have blindfolds on, or we shouldn't, and therefore, your being here today is of tremendous importance, and we're pleased, and let the conversation continue.
Can I add to this? I have two questions, but your remarks were powerful, they were honest, and I think that's what we need, an honest dialogue to combat this. I will say prescription drug abuse is rampant. I will say it's an epidemic in some ways, and I'll tell you, you know, we don't, we talk about the abuser or someone that is addictive, but we seldom talk about the families that affect. It ruins families, it divides families. And what you were talking about, it is kept in secret in a lot of ways. In Greenwich, Connecticut, Hartford, Connecticut, Bridgeport, Connecticut, and that is the case, so this honest dialogue does help. So, I thank you, I thank Liberation. My two questions, and I'll just, they're quick. 159 out of 169 cities or towns are affected. 159 out of 169 cities or towns are affected. Is there a correlation, the 10 towns that are not affected in terms of geographics, how many people? Or is it just luck? And then my second question is, have you or Liberation been in contact with DCF and the childrens that are in foster care? What we're providing those kids that are inherently more at risk?
So here's what I say. I don't know what has prevented the other 10 towns in our state from having this problem. But that data was 2014. So we're 10 months in, or 11 months into this year. So if someone were to run that data again, I wouldn't be surprised if we eliminated a few of those towns off the list. I would say the second thing, the DCF is quite aware that drugs and alcohol are a problem because out of the 6,000 kids in the state system, roughly 2/3 of them are in the state system because their mom or dad or both have a problem with substance abuse. I would say, yes, they're at fairly significant risk because it's, I don't think any of us believe that the best place for a young person to be supervised and reach adulthood is through the foster care system. Beyond that, I would say I'm not equipped to comment. I would also like to take the opportunity to correct my presentation for the record because I don't want anyone saying, calling me or emailing me and say, I got my data wrong. It's 20% of all Connecticut youth aged 12 to 20 reported binge drinking in the past month. And 10% of all Connecticut youth aged 12 to 17 reported prior use month of an illicit drug. Thank you.
You, I believe you said that kids come to schools to source their drugs. Is it easy in Greenwich High School to figure out just where the drugs are coming from and stop it?
There's a resource officer there and there's like, the boundaries are pretty much set. But as with everything, there's a way to get things in. Over the summer, there was a group of four students from Greenwich High who actually were arrested for the sales of drugs. And that was that small group. Within the school, within the school. Yeah. So it's as with everything else, there is, you know, there is, again, so we talk about the heads turning. So the kid appears to not have any type of a problem. There doesn't seem to be any problem within the family. The kid is academically is successful. They're showing up. There's no truancy. And then they're, they're having the party. They're bringing a drug. And so they're selling it to someone else because of the fact that it appears at that point that it's not their issue. So it's as the first selectmen said, that it's, it always looks as though it's someone else's issue.
You know, one of the things is, you know, may I add to that? Because I, because I want to make sure that I'm clear with my friends at Greenwich High School. I'm happy to be there. It's a courage to do that. And that's exactly my point around the fascination we have with interdiction. The correction system can't stop drugs from coming in. The correction system can't do it. What makes us really believe that any school, anywhere in America, especially a school with 2,800 students, can stop at least a few students from bringing something in? So I don't want them to view this later and say, oh, my God, I trusted Mathis. The criminal justice system can't keep them, keep drugs out. The whole key to this thing is having a cultural shift in how we look at the use of mood-altering substances. We have Thanksgiving and Christmas around the corner, then New Year's Eve. People are going to be using lots of substances and lots of bad stuff will happen, both legal substances and illegal substances. You know, if I were to light up a cigarette right now, you all would look at me like I was crazy. But 40 years ago, there would have been ashtrays right up there. And you guys would have been, I'm from New Jersey, you guys, would have, you would have been lighting cigarettes for each other, right? The culture has changed. The culture has changed. 20 years ago, I could have stood up here and said something very insensitive about my gay and lesbian friends. And some people would have laughed. But people know you can't do that now. It's not appropriate. It's not a joke. And how did we change? We changed it through conversation. Was it messy? Yes, it was messy. But we got through it. That's the point. We got to get people to understand that, okay, I'm having a glass of wine. Maybe that's okay. But maybe having 10 of them is not good. Or understanding that 10 can have a glass of wine, but one of the 10 people who has a glass of wine would develop a problem. And then they shouldn't have any wine, really, ever. And how do you help them in treatment? How do you get them? If you change the conversation, maybe we would do more basic research into addiction. There was a time when the gay and lesbian community said, we need to do more basic research into HIV and AIDS. We have to change the time horizon to bring medications on. When is the last time any of your friends said, we have to do more basic research into any part of addiction? This is the cultural change that I think a community like Greenwich, if the folks in Greenwich pick this up and start talking about it, guaranteed, other communities will pick it up and talk about it and we'll have a healthier community for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for a very informative and thought-provoking presentation and really a conversation because I think you're right on that. It has to be an ongoing conversation. So we look forward to the continued dialogue and perhaps laying out the next steps. I do know that we have to fill a position on the West Cog Task Force. And that's something, I've been having conversations with several of our folks here on who is best suited to represent us. It is somewhat of a subjective question, but certainly any guidance or input you have, you can share with me offline as to the individual, knowing what the time commitment is. Finally, I'll just say, in terms of the high school and the program that's in effect locally, is a juvenile review board. And so even for those individuals who do come forward or do find themselves addicted through no fault of their own and they get caught up, at least on the first-time offense, with the legal system, we have a process in place where it's handled outside of the court system. And the juvenile review board is something that we're very proud of because it does not put the children in, or the young people, I shall say, into the judicial system for something that perhaps was out of their control or, you know, were circumstances such as we're talking about. So I think that's another coordinating piece. But again, thank you very much for being here today. I think it was one of the most impactful presentations and important presentations we've had. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Do you have Mr. Posner's background? Because I have my answer. Can you go get me?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is appointment and nominations. We are, we are still, believe it or not, administratively looking at filling a couple vacancies within the 2015 calendar year. But right now, we're actually, so we're continuing to do that. But we're beginning to turn our attention to those board and commission positions that terms expire on March 31 of 2016. And the reason for that is we wind up with probably 15 to 20 positions that need to be filled. And we do our best to try to synchronize ourselves to the representative town meeting calendar so that, in fact, those positions that expire on 3/31/16 are acted upon so that the individuals can take effect on April 1. And so over the next several meetings, we'll be looking to accomplish that objective. Again, we do have several spots we still need to fill, notably Nathaniel Witherell. And we still have the Housing Authority spot that actually dates to 2014, August 31. So I do want us to bring closure to that relatively quickly. And with Michael not being with us, he's our point person. We'll have to pick up the slack. As a reminder to me, Ben, if you could, I need on the Board of Ethics, we need to just confirm the status of one of our members whom I believe has resigned, at least from one of my advisory committees. I want to confirm if she's also resigned from Board of Ethics because we do have a candidate that came forward for that. And that is, we need to contact the Reverend Leanne Tolzman just to make sure of her status. I did receive a letter dated November 14 from Larry Simon, and it reads, "Please accept this letter as my resignation from the Retirement Board for the Town of Greenwich. I've had the pleasure to serve on this board for the last four years and I'm proud of its accomplishments. During this period, the retirement system administrative components were converted from an in-house system to outsourcing at Transamerica. The board greatly expanded the range and scope of alternate investments and successfully weathered the transition through four different administrators. In addition, the board has put in place better policies and procedures, modified the charter to improve asset allocation returns, and worked to educate both the Law Department and the Board of Estimate and Taxation on our investments. Even though my term does not expire until June 30 of 2017, my election to the Board of Assessment Appeals precludes me, precludes my continuing on the Retirement Board. I appreciate the confidence you have shown in me as well as the support you have provided." So that's actually, I just want to share publicly because that position is not filled by this board. It actually is filled in a unique way in that it's the moderator, the RTM, the chairman of the BET, and the first selectman who make that appointment. So I don't think I'm telling tales out of school to share with you that. It is my intent to support for that position. Once we post the meeting is Joe Pellegrino. Joe previously served on the Board of Estimate and Taxation. I believe the BET has appointed him to their other post-employment benefit committee. And he had expressed a desire when the last position came open for it. And I declined moving him forward because we had an able person in Mr. John Chadwick. So I'm only sharing with you my intentions. It's certainly subject to a vote in a formal proceeding by the other two gentlemen who have that responsibility. In addition, Mr. Simon sent another letter. This one reads, "As you know, I previously served on the Board of the Nathaniel Witherell until the conflict with my position on the Retirement Board required me to resign in August. I am writing to you to express my interest and desire to return to the board and ask that you nominate me for a term starting no earlier than January 1, 2016. I have continued to stay involved with Nathaniel Witherell activities and know that I can serve as a valuable board member. With my background in healthcare, finance, and statistics, as well as my tenure on the BET, I can be an important addition to their board." If you think I can be approved in December at the RTM meeting, my nomination would have to be submitted by the November 20. We've actually, we actually did not, I mean, I'm not saying this to you, Mike, but we did not tee him up for the 20th meeting because he was resigning effective January 1. Needless to say, he'd like to be considered for re-nomination in service. So perhaps we could deal with that today and plead with the Department of the Town Clerk to let us find his resume and get it in so that we bring that up to par. Because I do know Witherell is one of the boards that's operating with, I think, at least two-member vacancy. So, so moving forward. Thank you, Michael, for getting that. I'm going to begin with, let me find my paperwork, with the Nathaniel Witherell because I just left off that. The interesting thing about if we were to nominate, so Larry's came off the Nathaniel Witherell, but his term was expiring in 3/31 of 16. And then also, we have the position vacant. So this would be for 3/31. So at this time, I'd like to move the nomination of Lawrence. We've got two Lawrences. This is Lawrence Posner of 633 Roundhill Road, has to be nominated a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring 3/31/18. And according to the records that I have showing their membership, there is a position still reflected that Frank Scarpa occupied. He stepped down 3/31/15 that I believe has, that's still been open. So just to be clear and congruent with, and that would make sense because what we're proposing him for, Mr. Posner for, is 3/31/18. So I want to get the bookkeeping right. So I'm nominating, moving.
I think Dr. Ennis replaced Frank Scarpa.
But Ennis is on here already. He replaced Chris Thurlow. See, we had two. I'm following this sheet here. And I see that position. And then I see Larry's, the position he stepped out of. So I feel comfortable, based upon the data in front of me, that, and Peter Crumbine confirmed this, right? With that sheet he sent in terms of openings. I feel comfortable with the 3/31/18. So I'd like to move Mr. Posner. He's a retired physician who is board-certified in internal medicine and medical oncology. He was the global head of Regulatory Affairs and Compliance for Siegfried AG. All right, Mr. Raymer, are you a Swede? Can you help me pronounce this?
Siegfried.
I tried. As a contract manufacturer of active pharmaceutical ingredients and drug products, interesting, given our last presentation. He spent nearly 28 years in the pharmaceutical industry in research and development. He earned his MD from Case Western University, his master's degree in economics from the University of Connecticut, and his BA degree from Brandeis University. He is a member of the Board of Directors of the Greenwich Symphony, a member of the Dean's Advisory Board, College of Liberal Arts and Sciences, UConn Stores, a member of the UConn Foundation, and a member of the Council to Advance Human Health. UConn Foundation, and a member of the Council to Advance Human Health, Case Western Reserve School of Medicine, Cleveland, Ohio. So we have a wonderful person in Dr. Posner, and I'm happy to put his name before you for consideration.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay, again, this is to nominate Lawrence Posner for a term expiring 3/31/18 to the Nathaniel Witherell Board of Directors. And all those in favor?
Aye.
So that would be slotted into the position Frank Scarpa, just to... And in terms of Larry Simon, I'm happy to move him forward. But the way this is structured, he's going into his position, which expires 3/31/16. So by the time we get, if we get him in, he's going to come back again.
Why don't you do it?
Good, he should. Okay, 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 great. So turning our attention to the positions that are expiring on March 31st, 16, we turn our attention to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As everyone knows, the Planning and Zoning Commission is one of the signature boards within this town that carries with it considerable responsibility for the quality of life and the character of our community. Over the last several months, we have been looking at the composition, as we see a changing of the guard, with a number of the more longer-term and senior members stepping down after service to the community. At this time, I'd like to put a nomination, the name of Nancy Raymer, to serve as a regular member on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/19. Now, this is the position to fill a vacancy that is going to be recreated with the announced retirement of Planning and Zoning Chair Donald Heller. Ms. Raymer was a partner in the law firm of Raymer &amp; Raymer, specializing in family law, prior to her retirement in February 2014. She has been an attorney since 1974, and also performed pro bono legal work on the side, including volunteer legal counseling for the YWCA's Domestic Abuse Service. She is currently an alternate and a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Nancy earned her BA degree from the University of Arizona, and her Juris Doctorate from St. John's University. She's an associate member of the Greenwich DTC and member of the Community Development Advisory Committee. In the past, she was president of the Old Greenwich Riverside Community Centers and a member of the Riverside School PTA. Additionally, Nancy chaired the United Way Task Force on Domestic Violence. It was on the First Church School Board, the YWCA Board, and the YWCA Finance Committee. I have known Nancy throughout her tenure as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and have respected her diligence and hard work. She is an individual who takes most seriously the responsibility accorded to the Planning and Zoning Commission. She, on her own accord, went to the Connecticut Land Use for Municipal, the Connecticut Land Use Law for Municipal Land Use Agencies Education Program. It was an all-day seminar in March of 2013. She's also attended a seminar on form-based zoning in the spring of 2015. She cares deeply about our town, she's interested in maintaining the unique character of our town, and I am most pleased to put her name in nomination. And I would just say that I had a wonderful conversation with Ms. Raymer about the commission, its work, and sort of the perspectives that people share with me as the first selectman. And I have to say, I think that there's a real change going on in the commission with this turnover. And in addition, I also think, one of the observations that I shared, that I know the commission members universally have expressed to, is that they have a hard job to do in balancing the rights and privileges of the property owner with the need for regulation. And it's how they do it that often takes on the public sense. And I think, you know, they've worked hard to try and be balanced and not come across as judicial, but rather regulative, and regulating. And I think that's an art, really, to do. It's not easy when you have the unique set of circumstances of very high-level, high-compensated individuals appearing before you and having that modicum of balance. But I believe you have done it well, and I'm pleased to put your name in nomination today. Is there a second?
With pleasure.
Sure.
I have a couple of comments. They'll be short. These are my comments only. I am glad to see this bit of a contentious, my words, nomination come to an end. Nancy will be a welcome addition to P&amp;Z. She is respected, she's intelligent, she's well-versed. She is not hesitant to challenge, ask questions, hold people accountable. Maybe that's the attorney in her, or maybe that's because she's married to an attorney. But I will say, once again, my opinion, my opinion only, independent of this board, I did not appreciate the jockeying behind the scenes by certain members of P&amp;Z. It was inappropriate. Most importantly, what it did was, it cast certain doubts on certain members, and that's the most important. I think that was unfortunate, and it all could have been avoided to achieve the same results that we're receiving today. So it is my pleasure also to support Nancy Raymer.
Great. Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Congratulations. And again, this is a term that runs through 2019. I would just point out that the other term that was up only goes through 2017. So you, you know, you got a couple more years.
Onward and upwards.
One of my favorite mantras is, "Slow and steady wins the race."
That would be for Larry Simon.
Nancy, thank you.
And so Mr. Rosen has confirmed, we're good to proceed on the, back to Nathaniel Witherell, to move the nomination of Lawrence B. Simon to the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term that's expiring 3/31/16. Is there a second?
There is.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any other nominations to come before the board today?
We have turkey to eat.
You have to serve it.
No, we still have executive session.
That's right.
And we have your birthday cake.
Before the turkey.
Okay, so could we make a motion to go in executive session for purposes of discussing pending litigation?
So...
Okay.